Oh that's grown old thousands of years and he thumbs you down for everything that you say. You have to be like, no. If we know God as a personality, then we can relate with him. You know, you don't do things in life with relationships. You deal with it or you relate to it. Most people make the mistake of dealing with the relationship. They inspire it. You relate and mostly you don't know how to relate. It's a struggle how to relate. We learn how to relate over a period of time. It's actually very natural for the human being to relate. If he knows how to relate with God. I'll tell you why. Because it becomes a central, modal relationship. From where every other relationship is not successful. You know, even the end relation. So it's very interesting that at one point of time when India, people were very happy and in whatever material situation they were in, did not matter. Because everybody, everybody could have a relationship with God. And because of the godly relationship they had, they had relationship with Indians irrespective of their material possessions. You know that the British, Britishers came to India in the famous My College Report, this Oliver, they interred you see that. They couldn't find any beggars, no beggars. But today we were talking in the parking, in the, in the red light. That people were approaching us, panning the window and saying, can you do something, say a three kids. And they were wondering what should we do? And they were discussing that actually it's the result of our economy. Our economy produces beggars. But before the Britishers came, there were no beggars. Why? Why? Because of some other types of mechanics that will function. That's very interesting for us to know. Because people live about their central theme and focus of the important grounding relationship with God. And make them feel this, make them happy, make, make God very relatable. Make God very, very accessible, approachable, relevant. Relevant and relatable and accessible and approachable, everything that you want. So but now over a period of time, people find it very, they find themselves very distanced. What is that thing called God? What is that person called God? One thing is to look at it philosophically, the other thing is to look at it theologically. The other thing is to look at religiously. You can look at it and sometimes you can see it in different ways and fight with each other when they're coming on different platforms. The Bhagavad Gita is not a religious document. Actually, not a religious document. It's not a religious book. It's a book of the truth. It just says these terminologies like Krishna and all of that. You can change it if you want. You can change the name if you want. But the point is understanding that the speaking is about the truth. Otherwise called the absolute truth. You can call the truth by any name you want. That's a relative requirement for us. But the truth doesn't change because you call it by any name. So it's something like that. Uh, when we relate like that, we will see that everybody is having a healthy relationship. Irrespective of their material possessions. That type of a religion is a universal religion. It is not, it doesn't have to be called something Hindu, this or that. That caption has stopped people from getting access to the information given in the Bhagavad Gita. That's very sad. Because the Bhagavad Gita doesn't speak about that. In fact, we'd be amazed to know something. In the end, in the eighteen chapter Krishna says, dump all religions. Do you know that? How many of you know that? Few people know that. It's amazing. Because somewhere in the seven chapters, he says, Whenever Dharma goes berserk, I will come and set it right. I come for that. Dharma seklani, I will set it right. But in the end, he says, chuck out all the religious stuff. What does he actually mean? How can you say the Bhagavad Gita's religious texts? In the end, he concludes the saying that, dump religion. If you know how to relate with me, religion is not required. Because the purpose of religion is to learn to relate with me. It's very interesting. It's very interesting. When I, when I read that for the first time, I couldn't believe it. This is actually real. It took me a long time for me to crack it and understand what does it mean really? What it really mean? So most of the time, the understanding of religion that we all have, especially in this world today, in the now, is a religion that has been explained to us and it's strongly influenced by Western thought. The religious idea that most people have in this world is the idea that comes from Western thought. But if you see in this idea and this understanding, you will see that it's very different from the Western idea of religious stuff. I'm not here to speak, you know, India is Indabaad and that is. I'm not here, I'm not speaking about that. I am speaking about the philosophy, the theology, the truthful understanding. I think that we should spend a little time on that. There is a reality, there is a truth out there that everybody agrees with. Scientists agree with that. They're trying to crack that code for a long time. Philosophers agree with that. You want to understand the philosophy. There are all sorts of people trying to crack that. There is one thing everybody agrees that there is a reality and they're trying to access that reality. Right? And each one is trying to access it in different ways. In different ways, but it's not so easy to do that. It's not that by one person's individual effort or by a group effort, we can crack open the reality. It's not happened. But in this book Bhagavad Gita, you'll see that's very clearly explained. What is that reality? What do you want to know it by? How do you know it? And all that is explained very simply. That's why Bhagavad Gita is so wonderful a text. You can repeatedly read it and repeatedly get newer and newer answers of that same understanding. Amazingly, we and our original understanding of who God is, what the truth is, what Bhagavad, is covered by all different types of notions, ideas, and understanding from different types of invaders and conquerors and colonizers and everybody. Because all of them, the methodology for colonizing somebody and subjugating somebody is to take hold of their culture and actually diminish it in front of them and spittle of it and then overpower them. You've got to, you've got to conquer from inside out. And that's what the Britishers did. In fact, the earlier people didn't do so much damage, but the Britishers did tremendous damage. They went inside and cracked your faith, your culture and got to the root of it and broke it and what he's trying to break it, etc. They attacked us psychologically, religiously, culturally and everything. They knew that's where, this is how we can crack these people. We're very strong in those areas. So what happened is the Hinduism we practice today is like a reaction to that colonial attack on your deep faiths. That type of attack on your culture and everything. A reaction to that is what we practice today as Hinduism. But somehow, most of the people don't get to be real understanding insight of what exactly is being mentioned here in this book of religion. When we speak of religion, we mostly are reflecting what you've been taught in the schools and the colleges and common parlance, what is spoken about. I studied in the Christian convent throughout my life. And I used to go to the pews and kneel down there because the mothership told me to do that. And she was so nice. Every time I meet her, she'll give me a coffee. And she said, my child, my child. And I thought, this is so good, so nice. And then I would kneel down in the pews and I would pray like everybody else. She said, don't do that prayer, you'll do these prayers. I'll give you these prayers. You can kneel in the pews, you can go to the church, but you must pray this. And then I would come home and ask, but what does a prayer mean? These things, these shlokas, what does it mean? She said, you should pray to be a successful person. You should do good in your studies. You should, you know, God gives you all these things. I said, yeah, that's very nice. I want to be successful. It was a very simple prayer, I understood. And the mothership also said, you get the same thing by praying in the pews. I said, they're all the same. They do the same, Christianity does the same. And a simple view of who God is. You, this is like an order supplier. You ask, he gives you. You give your application, I want this and you get it. A simple childish view of who God is. And that's all there is. We don't have to ask any more questions. And even if you did ask any more questions, nobody would get good answers. Because nobody knew. Nobody knew. But amazing thing, that's what I'm saying, is that most of our understanding is based on Western religions. They didn't have the advantages. Maybe Christianity. And you will see that they did not also have the good understanding of who God was. Because over a long period of time, it was interesting. Not to criticize any religion, but I'm just saying generally, to get into the truth of understanding. You'll see that in history of the Christian religion, if you go back, you'll see horrible things. You hear about many things that are horrible. Inquisitions, crusades and burning people at the stake and fighting out civilizations and doing lots and lots of violent stuff. And today even they are repentful about these things. Because if you look at them, actually, let's say for example, Christianity. The religion is called Christianity because it's about Christ. But Christ spoke about God. Love thy Lord with all thy heart and all thy soul. He told them about God and he told them God is very kind, shows humans to worship God. But the entire following talks about Christ only. Entire following talks more about Christ. They made Christ God almost. It's like that. They worship Christ on a cross. They will, they're very sincere by the way. But this is what has been given to them and they accept it and they say it. But you ask them, they know very less about God. Do you notice? If you ask them about God, they know very less. I was in an interfeet meeting with the very big Christians all over India. Christian heads and there were some from the Western world. And then Sri Vaishnava priests. And we had a Christian white head on. It's like very good scholars and nice, not brothers, extremist views. In that, I was so amazed to see that each one produced a paper from some of them. Those scholars in the academic room, very well read. And one of our devotees who did his PhD in taught on Vaishnava philosophy at the University of Oxford. He wrote a paper and presented it. It was about love of God. That's all. Paper was about love of God, loving God. It was such a simply written paper based on what's written in the Bhagavad Gita. Krishna says in Bhagavad Gita, the eighteen chapter, they become like devotees. In other words, Krishna is asking you to fall in love with him. I call Bhagavad Gita romantic love story. Because Krishna's appealing, have a relationship with me, try it and it work out. And then he's going to say, and when you have love with the supreme Skarbhati and he's voicing you to fall in love with him. That was explained very simply. Everybody needs love and they need to be loved. Everybody wants to love and therefore this isn't a culminates in this thing. Very simply explained. That person from a church in Kerala, very good scholar, wrote. He said, I like this paper so much. He expressed himself verbally. He said that, because in all their papers, they take a lot of Sanskrit shlokas from this in Bhattacharya and quote it. In their papers about Christianity and everything. And in this paper, there was no Sanskrit shloka, nothing. Simply plain stuff written. Love of God, the supreme, the soul, he needs it so much. Everybody is looking for love. Krishna often said, it's this, it's this, it's this. And they speaks about the devotee's love, Madhya Shoda's love and some different devotees' love. Love is supreme. Very simply explained. That man got up and frankly said, I love it. I like it so much. Why? I didn't know God is capable of loving and reciprocating with love and friendship and all this that you're talking about. Because in the paper, you know that you can have love in five different relationships. A friendly relationship with God. You can have a parental, like father and son, or mother and son type of relationship. You can have a relationship of a mother and a conjugal relationship. You can have a friend, you know, dasya, a servitor relationship, like this is explained. All this is a sign of love. Different people have different tastes and individual tastes and that's, it affords that relationship. Relationship is not dictated only this way, like you do a history. You can express yourself out. So he read the papers. It's so expansive, so broad, so nice. I like this idea. And then at that time, he said, we have never been told these things in our religion. He expressed it. Then he said that, we don't know much about who God is. Jesus Christ told us that to serve humanity, to love everybody. And if you want to really serve God, you must serve humanity and so we do that. But we don't know much about God. It struck me very much. And during the break, I actually very spoke to him. I said, why didn't you say that? And he said, actually, we don't know. We just know, mention about it much anyway. But I said, Jesus Christ, I said, and the commandments tell you that love thy Lord with all thy heart and so, is my great commandment to you. Yeah, but we know how to do it. So it is interesting that previously Jesus Christ was talking this in the Jewish synagogue. And all the big rabbis and everybody, they thought he's a good preacher and he was a Jew. And he was speaking and listening. Hundreds of people were coming to listen to him because he's speaking in very simple terms. That everybody could understand. And then over a period of gradually, he came to the real truth about God and everything. The rabbis got a little disturbed because over a period of time, maybe pointed some sort of criticism towards them. And so you throw them out. He went ahead and he continued to do what he's supposed to do and these followers also behind him. And then you heard the story. You say there was crucified and all that. And these rabbis played a very key role in that, in crucifying him also. And then the whole religion called Christianity based on Christ came about. But God was celebrated for that. Today he was a Christian who's God, but he didn't have much information on it. Then I have much information. But it's the world's most widely spread religion, the largest religion in the world. Which is very amazing that a lot of religions do not really have information of who God is actually. How do I relate with him? Right? So the Bhagavad Gita speaks only about that in very simple terms. In very simple terms, very humane and very relatable and understandable. It's nothing so difficult to understand. Because it's our nature to actually worship. It's our nature to worship. Because people question some nowadays, why should I worship? Why should I worship somebody above me? Like I said, falling flat and doing that. Let's hate something out of him. But here is, a very important thing is, we all have an inclination to worship. You may not be worshiping God, but for sure you'll be worshiping somebody. It could be Taylor Swift. It could be somebody else or the film, you know, cine actress or actor. It could be a cricketer. It could be a, you know, summer star this way. They all play some icons. They always inspire us. In some way, we have a liking towards them. That tendency to worship is there deep inside it. That's why you see in civilizations, the Egyptian civilization, they worship the goddess called Ha in the beginning. And then the Mesopotamian civilization, they're all trying to worship that God. They don't know anything about it, but they worship it in some form, this way or the other. You just don't know. So what you want to worship? That thing is there inside you. Of course, the other thing is also that I want to be worshipped. That's also there. I want to be prominently situated and people, they fall down and pulled down to me. That's also pretty good actually. You see, oh, I mean, let's agree that. It sounds good, right? I feel like God. Why? Why should you even be enjoying it? That's another side of it. Hundred eighty degrees apart. So I, I just want to, I just want to, I'm finishing. Uh, I just want to point out these things that in Bhagavad Gita, you have the real understanding of what religion is. You have the real understanding of the absolute truth. You have to understand who God is. You can understand who are you and everything becomes relatable. All the dots can be joined together. Something wonderful comes out of it. And it's a book of choices. It's not that Krishna is saying, do this. You will see that he gives various choices. And he's sort of voicing you to take up the topmost charge also. Because my recommendation is this, it's okay with this, 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 this. Very tolerant, very patient, very expansive, very broad and very tolerant. And definitely wanting you to make a path to progress. Right? So I wanted to say these few words today that God is your friend. You can relate with him as your friend. And there's an exciting amount of information. And incidence of God and his devotee as friend, the most prominent is Arjuna and Krishna. They were friends. And on the battlefield Krishna told, not only of you by devotee, but also because you're my friend, reveal the secret to you. Rahasyam, this secret confidential information, I will reveal to you. That's why Krishna spoke the Bhagavad Gita. One of the reasons was because you're my friend. Right? Because you're my friend, I can give you this information. That's interesting. And if you read the Bhagavad and other stories, you'll see, they were really friends. Even in normal situations, sometimes even materially speaking, they had that type of friendship. It was as if they were found always, you know, with their arms on each other's shoulders. They were found sitting one on another, with the head on another one's lap and talking and laughing. Discussing war tactics and strategy and everything. And then we would see Arjuna telling Krishna, sort of, I think I've fallen in love with your sister Subhadra. Uh, I mean, so beneath you, he said, friend, don't worry. I can't think of a better husband than you. But the only problem is my younger brother Balaram. And they made a whole plot of how Arjuna, we go to the Samyasi. He said, if you go to Duvaraka as a Samyasi, my brother is crazy after Samyasi. He calls someone, washes their feet, feeds them. Also that I'm going to Subhadra, who he will come to cook with, who's a super cook. And then this, I'm making a long story short, Arjuna actually doesn't, yeah, actually dresses like a Samyasi and goes to Duvaraka. And he says, don't involve me in this. If Bhagavan comes up, don't get me, it could be complicated. Because he's my brother. But I'm perfectly okay with him marrying my sister. It's best you carry her away. Because my brother is trying to get her married to Duryodara. Because he is his disciple and he feels he's the best match. I just don't want that beautiful sister to mind you. So I don't mind you even carrying her away. This was a land of friendship. And then it so happens, he goes there as a Samyasi and actually sits there and he invites him and he eats at his home. And Subhadra is wondering, who is this famous Samyasi who has cooked food through the curtain? She looks at him, my gosh, look at his arms. It's so sturdy and so thick and the ground is marked. So it looks like a Shatri's arms. He must be using the bow and the arrow. He looks at all marks on his, he looks like a Shatri's body. And then he was looking, he should be also looking at him. What cha, what do you? They both looked at each other and then they exchanged views and then he carried her away. As a Samyasi, carried her away. Imagine the bricks, candle and how Bhagavan felt super angry. When he came to know that this is not a Samyasi, it's Arjuna. Oh, I know so well. Why did he do this? So he gets super angry and Krishna came and comes and he's saying, relax. After all, he has done it. He's done a mistake. Because he doesn't know how to deal with it, you know? He knows both of us so well, so awkward for him. If he likes it, let's, let's do it. Let's do a nice wedding. It's the best husband you can get for Subhadra. Don't you think so? And it is quietly commenced. And in this way, Subhadra got married to Arjuna. And simply because he said that, I like your sister. This is just one example. There's another example of Krishna telling Arjuna, I like that girl who's more, you know, who is she? And he going and booing that girl and getting, it's not all about getting girls along, but the other things. And then I have talked stories of their relationships and friendly relationships. So on the other side, you have a relationship, a friendly relationship that you can also relate with. It's not only philosophical stuff. In the world while Krishna was here, he did show that family relationships in many ways. So as mentioned, you can also do that with your bhakti for Krishna. Then your life becomes wonderful, exciting. And you have relationship with the absolute truth in a friendly way. Happy friendship, grateful for you. Om Tassat. Okay? If you have any questions, I'd be very happy to try to answer them. She, she had a right. Yeah, after, after.
So you mentioned that worship, you want to do it and you also want to get it. Isn't it just another form of love? And because, you know, intrinsically, yes, to love, so that is the reason why we want to be able to the form of friendship and also take it. And he, he chahiye, he somebody worships us. But isn't that exactly the same?
But you started with saying friendship, worship, and then you said friendship.
No, I'm just talking about worship.
You're conflating words. You're talking about worship. So you're saying that worship is some form of love. Sure, true. Then you love somebody. But you know, worship is God. You raised a very interesting point. Uh, thank you. Worship is also one type of a relationship. But worship is more a relationship of a master and a servant. It's like looking upon somebody. And that's also a relationship. But when you say that that is one form of love, sure. I want to do my love towards this person by worshiping, by serving him. You know, it's very important to know that when you love somebody, you have to serve that person. Is there something that you want that I can do for you? I'd like to do something for you. So that's one type of thing. So in that sense, when you worship, so you saw, you have that type of feeling towards someone, you can express it. Your love expressed as worship towards a person. Perfectly, yeah.
But by that logic, we should only have that kind of worship for God, not for anybody else. Because we don't want to serve other people. Because then we see, if, I mean, if I do it for a person, I'm, you know, serving them, putting them on a pedestal. Is that right?
Yeah, you are right also. But you're also, you also need to know that if there is somebody who is attached to God so closely, who represents God, and also to worship him, that's allowed. And that's the etiquette observed in this thing that you call that. Somebody who's very close to God and who speaks the word of God, who worships God very dearly, serves God very dearly. You also get benefit of your God consciousness improved by also worshiping that person. Our founder Prabhupada said, love me, love my dog. He said, he used that phrase. He said that, if you love me, you love my dog too. It's a very faithful dog to me. So he said that you may also equally express your worship and love towards somebody. Be closely serving the Lord and follows his order and teaching you that. Because that person is not accepting. Because that person is not accepting it as though you're worshiping him. He is accepting it and passing it on. Something like that. Hope that helps, yeah. The gentleman here. And then I'll call upon you, okay?
It's unrelated to the discussion, but I just wanted to.
It's okay, it's our open house.
So at what age should we left in Navan for Maska, and will he ever return back from this?
About ten, about ten years. Approximately, there's so many days and so many months.
Did he ever return back?
He did return back after killing Dantavakra. That's a landmark in timeline. After killing Dantavakra, he came back. But it's not officially mentioned in him, this thing. But Acharya has commented that he did come back, because that was like one hundred twenty-five years after. There was something, something of a curse or something, in line with that, he stood his leelas, and he came after that. That's another issue to call it.
So we lack my understanding?
Yeah.
Then why do we have so much of, you know, of Rada and Krishna, you know, uh, whose love thing and all that? You know, it's shown that, so why would that?
Why not?
Ten year old boy will not be, you know?
Exactly, you're right, you answered the question actually. Because it's not a type of love. Because for the type of love that you're talking about, the person should be at least fourteen, sixteen years old.
So we have kind of, uh, this representative?
Yeah, because it is not that type of mundane affair. When Rada and Krishna and the Gopis performed the Rasli, they were eight years old. There's no chance of them maturing into that type of an understanding of lust, they mean them. So it was pure, unavoidable bhakti, and Krishna reciprocating with them. Age is no condition for that. Because it's completely out of the world, it's transcendental, it's totally spiritual, it's totally filled with bhakti. So, it's not of that mundane type. That's how it's understood. That's why, unless you understand who God is, you will find it difficult to appreciate some of these leaders. Because we'll see it from the lens of the material world, and the laws that govern it, and for that type of consciousness, you won't get to the real understanding. But what is mentioned there in the Bhagavat especially, it gives a brilliant explanation. It says that Krishna is reciprocating with the Gopis for their love. So one will extend a little bit inside. You know Krishna will steal their garments, you go to Keshi Ghat in Dhanu, he'll steal their garments. And he just wants to have fun with them, because they're such pure lovers of Krishna. They don't have anything else but Krishna, yeah? So he wants, just want to tease them, because he can afford to tease them, because they're so loyal and so focused on Krishna. They don't have anybody else but Krishna. So he'll tease them, and then, I'll give you your addresses only, if you come and come out of the waters and pay your beset system. And then say, oh, I'll get them all, sir. Well, if you do this type of mistake, you'll complain to the father. Then Krishna will say, father, he's an old man already, what will you do? He doesn't know anything, he can't do anything much. Then they said, we'll call him Kamsha and come with him, king of Mathura. Krishna will say, no, go ahead, do it, he's a figure. Hey, you know, nothing, I can, I can get that straight and all that, so there's a lot of nice banter to talk and, uh, and it's very nice to hear that. And then they finally agree, he's getting cold and all that, we have to go home and all that, finally agree. Willingly, happily, they'll come and bow down and all that, and then Krishna will give the clothes. The technical philosophical reason is that, you can be naked only in front of your husband. And the Gopis had done a full vritta. In the vritta, all of them, every morning, would get up in the shivering morning, take a cold water bath in the Yamuna, and lick the land with their worshiping baby, and telling her that, they want Krishna as her husband. You want, all of them together are praying, they want Krishna as their husband. So Krishna constantly reciprocates that and finishes, fills, fills him up to that, yeah? And since all of you have seen me in this form, I'll pray. But, he goes ahead to extend it and say, I'm so pleased with you, and your very pure love for me. That in the coming nights, I'll dance with you in music and play. He promises in that. Then the rasli happens, but they're not very young. They're just eight years old, max, Krishna is max eight, others are seven years, eight years, that. So if you look at, if you look at it in that way, you'll understand it's just a play of bhakti. And a very sophisticated, high level exchange of bhakti is going on there. Untouched by any type of material, mundane affair. That's why the Vrindavan festivals are supreme. Although it is like, in physical terms and mundane terms, just ten years out of the hundred twenty-five years. But then, just like the peak performance of Krishna's leas. Hope that helps you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a little more philosophical question.
Please do.
Moving away from romance and that.
Yeah.
Point I would like to, how do you determine absolute truth? The world is full of. Recently, we had riots here in Guzum, yeah, where one human being killed the other human, very sad. We are all very disturbed since last two days, three days. We are very confused. One man's truth is another man's false truth. So how do we determine what is absolute truth? In the world today, we see wars, where one man believes he has done the right thing, other people believe he's done the wrong thing, right? Now, there are parallels to it in Bhagavad Gita, and very inspiring, we are going through with it, with devotee, and he is really guiding us well. But still, this whole thing, when, when such incidents take place, one gets very shaken. And faith in human beings also starts coming down, you know? So how does one restore that faith? And build back that faith? And what is the, how, how do we know what is absolute truth, you know? So, I'm sorry, I'm a bit disturbed last two, three days, what has happened? We've been very close to it, but that is why I'm asking you this question.
You're perfectly justified in asking that question. You're perfectly justified in asking that question. This world is so designed that these type of things happen. And intelligent people have to question it. We live in this world, between birth and death, and things happen. And if you didn't question it, then you are not living in a life of a human being. At, ah, to Brahman Chitnyasa, the capacity to question is invested in us for that purpose. You must ask questions, fine, perfectly right. In your first statement, you said, what is the absolute truth? Then you went ahead to speak about relative opinions of people. What's false truth for one person's truth for the other, you said. But there are two types of truths we are dealing with here. In the relativity of existence, we have also truth. There's a moral, ethical principles, and we follow that. You can't say, you can't relativize morality. Right? That's a big issue and discussion. Moral relativism has taken over even. The moment they reject an authority of religion, or God, or anything scripture, or the holy man, or whatever. If they reject that, then you're stuck with making your own laws and going by your own moral code, man-made moral code. It becomes chaotic. Now you understand why religion is important. Because at least there are some codes that everybody will, so that everybody can peacefully enjoy a life, can be safe, can be blessed. Everybody will give their point of view, POV it's called.
Yeah.
Their point of view, and, and you're asked to respect every piece of you. Equality, equity, and everything together. So it becomes very confusing for most people. That's why, and as you know, there's no escape from this, because it's a man-made thing. You made it this way. Now you understand there are the necessity for an authority. But inside that, there is a truth, that we all agree to follow this moral code, that when we stand in front of the, uh, you know, theater, or in front of this thing, we all queue up. And whoever comes first, he gets the first place in the queue. And these are all simple etiquettes, they follow, we don't break it. Because we know, we make each other's like, bearable and nice, we respect each other. Okay, somebody says, I really have to go, and when you come, I'm like, go ahead, if you want to, I mean, I may offer myself in good stead. All that is possible, but generally, you will follow. So these are certain rules and certain standards that we should follow. The same thing should be extended. So there is a truth, that you must stand in the queue in order to get your supply. Your turn will come. Similarly, there are relative truths in this world that we need to follow. So human beings can live and exist, but who makes those laws? Who makes those truths? That's where the fight comes. Sometimes in a country, they have their own, at least the government deduces something, and they manage it. And it differs from country to country, some are religiously oriented and they have laws like that. Some are extreme religious laws, some, you know, but you have all shapes and sizes. But rules are necessary, some standards are necessary, you agree with that, right? So, the bigger they are, then you have everything properly. Now, that is one truth. But what I'm speaking about absolute truth is completely different from this truth. It's something like saying, that the sun rising in the east is an absolute fact. Because your grandfather said it, your great-great-grandfather saw it and said it, always going like that. So within the relative world, we can observe and see, sunrise in the east has never changed. You could say it's an absolute truth. It doesn't change. What your notion is, even if in the north pole, you don't see the sun at all, it's still, they all know that sunrise is in some places and, because I've traveled and I've seen it. So it's a truth that you cannot deny. Same way, human beings should understand, there is an absolute truth that doesn't change. That absolute truth, the Bhagavad Gita is, is a person. And it represents him as Krishna. You don't want to call him Krishna, it's perfectly all that, you can call him Allah, you can call him Yahweh, you can call him anything you want, that's not the point. Because I agree and understand that there is an absolute truth, a reality. That definition is what is given in the Bhagavad Gita. And that absolute truth happens to be writing the charity for Krishna, for Arjuna, because he's his good friend and all that. And Arjuna gets better than him, and he's flummoxed with many things, he asks questions. These questions that you're asking. And Krishna tells him, I happen to be the absolute truth. I happen to be the God you're talking about, and he explains. So that's really amazing. So there is a place for absolute truth and relative truths in this world, how we must conduct ourselves. But everybody related with the absolute truth, life becomes better. And that absolute truth makes these relative truth laws when he comes. That is called dharma, that is called religion. So religion is necessary for proper human conduct and civilization. So that, that thing is taken care of, and then they can all focus, absolute, the basic things are the truth. So there's the two different types of truths, one is absolute, you don't, you can't question it, it's like the sun rising. Nothing to question about it, it does, it happens, it's going like that throughout, it's a truth. I just gave you, uh, happening in this world as an example. But similarly, Krishna says in Bhagavad Gita, I happen to be that absolute truth. If you know me as the absolute truth, then worship me as the source of everything, you are intelligent. There is no truth above me. I am the origin and the source of them. It defines philosophically what's the meaning of God. That God is not only, you know, the way we understand God as a control, God is, what a very broad, deeper definition, in terms of absolute truth and everything. Does it help you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I did for the same, uh, thank you. It is very similar to the two dharmas that we talked about in Bhagavad Gita, right? The conditional duty and the constitutional duty, it's kind of the same.
Yes, every one of us has got constitutional duty in relationship with the supreme absolute truth, which you must perform.
Right.
It's primary. Then we have a secondary relative duty, according to a material situation we are in. I have children, I've got to look after my parents, I've got a civil duty towards society, and all these things we do. So there are two duties. But one is more foundational and deep, and the other one is secondary and dependent on this. But the way human civilization is done now, is we're completely given of the main thing, and we're getting lots of problems when we're trying to do this. Secondary duty is a dependent duty on the primary duty. I can give an example. If you had a kid, a kid's here, he's going to school. Kya naam hai? Kya naam hai?
Jivraj.
Jivraj, concept plus one, okay? First class, jai, give a loud, unbothered, yeah? King of youth, Jivraj. So he's going to school, right, you're his father. He'll go up, second semester, third grade, fourth grade, like that, he's going to school every day. You're going to tell him, come on, ya, keep yourself properly, we'll learn to keep, keep your shoes strong, keep your cycle properly, keep your, we don't clean it, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm just going for the games, handle this, handle the, he'll run away, then his mom is going to do it. And she says, this is what I'm going to discipline. And she, your mom keeps telling, father keeps telling. And then he is wondering, one day he comes to her, okay, papa, I'm not going to school today, I'll search here and clean this room, clean the shoe, clean the room, clean the bed, clean this. Sab main clean karo, Jivraj. Kunki, aap itne, itne bar aap se bataenge, ek karun karo, today I'm going to go there, what will you say? I'm not going to school today, I'm going to do this game, what will your answer be?
I'll ask him to go to school first.
Exactly, why? That's his primary duty, he's a student. He will say, you never do that, it's okay, in the weekend I'll catch you, today you go to school. When you are on holiday, and when you have the time, and you're fooling around, that I'm not going to do it. But now, for now, I'll do it for you, yes or no? His primary duty as a student is to go to school and study. You're not going to, haven't at any time sacrificed that. Same way, for every one of us, as human beings, we should never sacrifice our relationship with the absolute truth and cultivation of it, that's our primary duty. If you do that, you'll see, you'll be able to do the secondary duties very easily. You'll be able to do the secondary duties easily. The secondary duties become huge monsters that represent you, because you are hooked up to the primary. That's mentioned by Krishna in Bhagavad Gita also. Did I buy, yeah?
There are two questions. The question is that, I've got, as a friend, my grandson, around six, seven years old, he was going to play in the playground, and then he said, Nanu is no friend of mine, what should I do? And I told him, not Kishna is your friend, make him as your friend, so he'll come with you, and you go to the school, play, you know, malls, anywhere. You request him, he will come with you, so you will get the good job. He said, okay. So he opened the door after the mandir, so he requested, dot, come with me. So he was trying for two days. Third day, he says, Nanu, but I have been trying for two days, he's not coming out, what to do now? My question is that, how to convince? My question is that, how to convince? The children are that age, so they start getting relationship with God. Because nowadays, youth generation, they more ask for the practicality, you know, like this. So my concern is that how to really convince the children, youth, about God as a friendship, friend heart otherwise. That's really my concern.
Since, since talking about a child who's very young. Obviously, their intellect and their maturity may not accommodate a philosophical understanding so easily. But what you do, like Pramupada, our founder, he said that my father. I used to watch him doing the worship at home. Then I, I sort of wanted to relate to God and he brought and gave me D T S. I said, you do. You develop worship and you develop a relationship. So he said, he gave, he will set up D T S to Abhay, his name was at that time. And he started imitating everything my father is doing there. You have to do everything, you'll do everything. And they say, I would offer, Nivedya, give me that, give me that. The father was encouraging him. He became attached to Krishna, developed a relationship. And then at one point of time, when he was a little grown, about five years old, he said, I have to do Rata Yatra. I have Jagannath D T S. Every year you should go on Rata. So his father said, yeah, let's build a Rata. They built a small Rata. And he said, everybody come, my family and the surrounding, pull the Rata. And he had everybody do the Rata, do kids and then he said, seven days, they want to have feasts every day and they should be Katta. And they did exactly that, became a big program. And this small boy was operating it. He developed a relationship. Right? So sometimes it's good to introduce them to DVD worship. That becomes easier for them too. Because they're already going to have pies and Barbie dogs and tests and that and kiss them and hug them and cook for them and all that. You do it for Krishna. Do you do that? Yeah. Right? Yeah.
Actually, the term from chapter fifteen of Bhagavad Gita, fifteen point eight. I was reading that, it says that at the end of your life, whatever you are thinking, you will become like in the next life. Like you're thinking about dog, cats or whatever you're thinking, in the next life you will become like that. But in the same verse, in the same verse fifteen point eight, it says that depending on your dharma, you will get the life in the next life. It will, you know, body you will get depending on your dharma. In the same verse it says. What happened in the, the better of chance, in the same day when I was reading in the evening, Siriman Babar Tom. It gave something, the same kind of thing, it says that if a wife loves her husband, so she will become man in the next life. And if a husband loves his wife very much, he will become a woman in his next life. And at the end he gave the warning to the man, do not love too much to the wife, you will become woman in the next. So my question was that, so my question was that, if there is a thief. His karma is that he's going stealing the things, he loves a lot with wife. So how it will happen to his next life?
You can understand the predicament that you are in. I would put all these things together. Actually, it's not so simple, like you can start simple math. You know, two plus two is equal to four. It starts like that. There are many, many factors involved in that. Simple thing you know, this sloka it says. Sadha tat bhava bhuta. Bhava means your consciousness. Whatever consciousness you have, that you will get. That you will get. So if you have a dog consciousness, you get a dog's body, you have to accommodate it of consciousness. The consciousness is more fundamental and primary and foundational and the body that you get in is secondary. Right? So what bhava you have, so many human beings have got dogish consciousness also. Many human beings have got different types of consciousness because of their over, overly excessive absorption and involvement in the material world. And they have trained themselves to learn yoga. So you will get that type of consciousness. And that body that accommodates that consciousness. Right? Now there are other factors like your karma also. So all that you put together and you will get. But your consciousness will chase you and it will be the deciding factor. That's what is mentioned in this sloka. What you're thinking of will also be according to your consciousness which you occupy. Thinking is a result of your consciousness. Thinking is the secondary thing. The more primary thing and foundational thing is your consciousness. Because you have developed a certain type of consciousness, you will think like that. So that's mentioned for Sramyam Vapi Smaran Bhavam, which is coming out of the Bhava. Tam tam evaithi konthia, that same thing you will get. Because your consciousness is a continuum, it has been developed and evolved to this. In your human life, if you've not taken care of it and if you're not indulged spiritually, you're not developed yourself, then you'll be degreed only. So you'll be degreed in the total consciousness. But you're supposed to elevate yourself to higher consciousness. And according to that you will get an higher birth. That's the factor. Actually, what body you will get is secondary. What consciousness we maintain? Because spiritual life is about maintaining and developing your consciousness. That is why our founder specifically called this movement International Society for Krishna Consciousness. When he was asked, Samajee, don't put Krishna, people do not follow you, put God consciousness and everybody will say, no. Krishna consciousness. He said specifically, because Krishna is God, and he's the absolute truth. You named it like that specifically, he said. Right? So that label of consciousness, he introduced it. At a time when consciousness was not being discussed much. After that, science has discussed consciousness to a great extent amounts. Peaking because of artificial intelligence and deep learning in everything together. But at that time itself, he spoke about the fundamentals. So it's important to develop and maintain your consciousness. You can feel your thoughts. If you read the Gita, you will feel the thoughts of your consciousness, not your mind, it's not your thought, that's a second link. Consciousness is foundational. So according to your consciousness, you start thinking, feeling, dwelling and associating with others. That's why the chanting of Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna affects your consciousness directly. That's foundational. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll come back to you.
So I have a.
Next.
I have a son, he's eleven and he thinks pride in saying that I am an atheist, I'm a Vichy. Uh, I don't know whether he's able to reflect, but taking off from the asking way before, like a prodigal. How can we take him out of the path of developing connection and relationship?
What is his age?
Eleven.
Eleven. So.
Very valuable.
Okay, okay, okay. So where did he pick it up from?
I have no.
No idea.
Because both of us, we cannot be praying regularly, but both of us are at circle level.
So let's assume that he's picked it up from his company, from his readings, from his friendship that he has at school or wherever it is. Uh, the same. Now you're challenged to pick thing. The problem is that you better know what these are this. You better know what these are this. These are. You better know what following and worshiping God is. In case you feel that we should also be at least, uh, to some extent inclined towards something religious or God conscious or. But a lot of people, if they're left to that, with the education system that we have. Will conclude atheism. It's designed for that. You're going to see that India is a secular republic is what is mentioned. We don't profess any religion. Deliver it to you, you can do what you want, we don't profess any religion. So you will see that they don't teach anything about religion. But that's another, another great, I will, talk we can have on. That you will never get to understand anything properly if you don't correct it. In some way will be absolute truth everything. It's mentioned in other ways. But the education that we afford them, obviously is not atheistic. You agree with that, right? It's got no patch of any atheism in it. But don't worry, I say, in every atheist is hidden a atheist. So I see it as an intelligent sign that within that system that he's in, that he's controlling that. Uh, I think there's no problem. But it's only a matter of time if you also pose intelligent arguments to him and have a dialogue. It's not that, you see, you can't force anybody to. You can't, in other words, you can't legislate their faith. Right? You want, I can understand from your, I'm assuming and presuming that you want to give him that living in a broad space. But unfortunately, you feel that I think he's controlling the wrong things. The space you're given, he's taken it and come to the wrong things. It's okay, step in. And you should, in a friendly way, discuss with him, which means that you should know. You should also know why you would want him to think otherwise. Isn't it? Yes or no? So the burden is now on you. That's where the real challenge comes. I want my son to be like this, but I may or may not be like that. It cannot be the way it works. Children are most influenced by their parents. Because it's a very close relationship of affection and love and everything. You are modeling things. He has learned a lot even from the school or from his company, but that's nothing, you can influence him with your influence that you have and affection and everything. The most important thing is a father, you can be his good friend. You don't challenging his belief and labeling it as wrong. You can say, so how do you think so? Let's work it out, let's think about it. And I'm sure that we can present this logic given in the Bhagavad Gita in many places. Our founder has argued these things very nicely in this book called Science of Self-Realization. You can read that. It's given you interesting ideas, you can read it with him and he will pose questions, you answer. If you have a, if you have a, you know, brainy son, then you're forced to be also a brainy. It's interesting. I, I always think that these people who think this are the people who will take up God consciousness very seriously, explain scientifically to them. Bhagavad Gita is a science of God. Science involved in understanding God, it's just that it's not taught. And start, you'll see they'll take it up. They'll say, it makes sense to me now. Nobody is taught, that's all. If you learn it nicely and you teach them. You are forced to learn Bhagavad Gita now. Jai, thank you, yeah.
Hare Krishna.
I'm not giving your names, but I should have asked you which one of you to mention your names. Your name?
Pavan Deep.
Pavan Deep, yeah.
Hare Krishna, my name is Sunny.
Sunny.
Before I come to my question, I was really enjoying this conversation right now and just want to share something. So some eight, nine months back to Bhagwad came for my first class with T S Akra and Dila Deep and Gav. And at that time, if anyone would have asked me, I would have said I'm an atheist. Uh, someone who doesn't worship God or doesn't believe, let's say in the concept of God, but someone believes there's some higher quality, something like that. Not proper atheist, but little. But slowly and slowly what draw, what drew me towards this and now nine, and you know that I, I now try to be a little more actively in work, is exactly this. Which is when those questions were posed, I couldn't answer. And that challenged my thinking and being, thinking rationally forced me to sort of go back, ask myself, if I can't answer this, then maybe what is being said is the answer. And then that journey started and that is how I sort of walked, started walking this path, mainly that kind of thing.
I'll, I'll respect to that also, but I think you're an agnostic, an atheistic person. Close means knowing. Agnostic means I don't know. Agnostic means I don't know about God. I'm willing to listen if you tell me. But most people don't know. But they use this term now which I'm atheist. But they're not atheists. Atheists are people who know very well about God and denying.
Yes, they are.
That described in the Bhagavad. Ravana is an atheist. He knows that Rama is supreme. Kritikashpu is an atheist, he knows Vishnu is supreme. He knows it and he's against it. Those people are atheistic. You're not so bad. They're a nice guy, just agnostic, nobody talked to you. Our parents didn't teach us, the school teachers didn't teach us, the professors and everybody else didn't teach us. That's what I'm saying. They got stuck with the Western thought and Western understanding got embroiled in a different type of understanding of religion, so unfortunate. But this land has got this amazing treasure of Bhagavad Gita having been spoken here. It's not just religion, it's a part of fantastic information about reality and truth and. If you read it only, you will know, it's not just about being Hindu. Okay? Okay, now with your question.
My question, yeah. So you were talking about improving consciousness. I have a question regarding that. So in order to improve consciousness, first, do I need to be self-aware of the current level of my consciousness? And if the answer is yes, how do I actually become aware, at what level am I? So that at least I know as much I have to tackle.
I don't have any dip sticking put through your nose or your mouth and check. But the real dipstick is that you become sensitive to your spiritual dimension.
Hey, lovely.
Coming. You right now are sensitive to your body, physical dimension. Your mental dimension, you're sensitive to it to a great extent. To a much lesser extent, maybe intellectually. But the least towards your spiritual dimension on the level of the spirit. Krishna explains in Bhagavad Gita, he said there are different levels of faculties. Indriyani, Paraniya, Indriyebhiya, Parhamanah, Manasaastu, Parabhuti, Yo Bhutiya, Parastu, Sahah. That person, the soul is the highest of a different category. Then the intellect, the mind and then the physique, all these are of matter composition. Now then your subconscious is a completely different dimension. It's spiritual, it's like anti-matter, it's not matter, it's spiritual. So the sensitivities for developing that is a different volume altogether. It's not just anything physical that would help you to develop that. You may use your physical ability, you may use your mental abilities, but these are tools. These are tools and you perform and indulge in a spiritual activity will affect your consciousness. It's so subtle, so fine, super fine. This Krishna is explaining that it's very subtle, the dimension of the soul and consciousness, very subtle and fine. That is why we chant, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram, Ram. As it directly goes and affects your consciousness. There are certain tools that you can use to affect your consciousness, this is one of them. Normally a mantra will affect your mind. Trayate, iti mana hai. But this thing will affect not only your consciousness, everything down the line. Consciousness is so foundational, it affects your consciousness and everything else will be taken care of it. Because you are consciousness. Awareness is the simplest way to describe consciousness in local, common terms. But it's something more than just awareness, because what is awareness would mean physical awareness, mental awareness to some extent, beyond that, we don't talk about awareness. But consciousness awaits your entire system. Everything is working because of consciousness. Both your mind, your intellect, your body, your senses, everything is plugged into consciousness and it's working because of that. It's foundational, fundamental. So, and since consciousness is spiritual, when you do an exercise that affects you spiritually, like I'm saying, chanting of the holy names with it. It affects us, affects our consciousness. Then you sensitize yourself to your consciousness, you will feel a spiritual experience gradually. In fact, even though you don't feel blatantly on your intellectual and mental platform. You still have a sense that this is something good for me. This is something good for me, I like that Kippen. I don't know what it is, but I like it. And I like that prashant, that's good. I mean, my mom has made those pastas before, my mom has given me this, but this is also a special, something about it. You awakened your spiritual, you can't touch it, you can't like put your finger on it, but there's something good about it. And it gets you attracted to it, that association that Kippen, that, this thing, you slowly are awakening and sensitizing yourself. You can see. Then afterwards, you read the Gita and then you understand the philosophy and intellectually connect with it. You materially connect with feelings and emotions gradually and then it becomes more and more of a reality. It's because your consciousness is slowly getting purified. Right, so it's not something that we can understand with the normal logic or normal material science. But you, you and your experience itself is a proof of it. It's not that, you know, you yourself are the proof of it. Your experience is proof of consciousness. You can see, what's his name? The world authority from New York University on consciousness, because the material world, you're studying consciousness, you're trying to crack it. What's his name? I forgot his name, big guy. He's speaking on a TED Talk, and I like that talk, he was very honest and frank. He said, now my studies of consciousness, I know it is there, I experienced it, but I can't write it down and explain it to you in scientific terms. We all know it, we all know it's there, it's the same. Because at one point of time in science, they were saying consciousness is a dirty word removed from science. Because it was challenging them a lot. But today, they know everything lies in understanding consciousness. And here is what we've done, Savi Prophet calling this movement, International Society for Krishna Consciousness. In nineteen sixty-six, in July eleventh, it gets its sign in July thirteenth, the month that just passed, he incorporated his car in New York. And he said, the society should be called ISCON, International Society for Krishna Consciousness. At that time, he explained consciousness in the Bhagavad. So brilliant, fifty-seven years before he was writing about consciousness. He was writing so clearly. In the Bhagavad Gita, Krishna is sitting on the battlefield. Avinashi, Tutakitti, Ene Sarva Midam Thatam. That which polates his whole body of consciousness, you can never destroy it. Then he gives another example, just like the sun illuminates this whole universe, Chura. Consciousness delivers this whole body with life, with energy, with awareness and everything, right? So, some of these things will make us understand deeper consciousness. And then we know, any spiritual exercise that we do in terms of Bhagavad Gita's prescription, will actually affect your consciousness. Developing bhakti is a most powerful way of affecting your consciousness and very fast way. Of course, you can develop jnana, knowledge also, of the fact, jnana here means difference between matter and spirit. Knowledge of that is jnana. I know now, matter and spirit are the difference. You become a jnani, you have understanding, you can also develop your consciousness in that, but goes to a certain level. But bhakti gives you a jump, boom. That's mentioned in the Bhagavad. Easy, Krishna is telling, forget Sarvadharman, they're just focus on me. Because you have the capacity to naturally love me and our love is forever, it just needs to be revived. So bhakti is a powerful way of, you know, rejuvenating your consciousness. That's why we chant Krishna, we read Bhagavad Gita, we get this understanding of who we are, spirit souls. How we relate with, on the level of being spiritual entities, it's a whole new world. It's exciting and it's true. Yeah, coming back, I'll just give my chance. I don't want to get into too many technical divisions, there were the others here who may not know some of them. But a relationship with the Lord can be in the neutral stage, Shanta Rasa. It can be in the Dasya Rasa, in a servant, servant and a servitorial stage. It can also be in Sakya, friendship, like I described to you, this thing. Oh, I forgot about the boat, I didn't know. What do you mean? Like that, Sakya and then Vatsalya, like the mother towards a child or the father towards a child. And then this Konjital, Shingar Rasa, Mathuri Rasa, like a lover towards a loved one, right? So these are five different levels of relationships. And then the Shanta Rasa is considered to be a little neutral, it's not very active. So people in the Shanta Rasa just know that God is great, I respect, I completely surrender to God, that's all. They don't go beyond this. They don't go beyond this. They don't cultivate the other higher and higher and higher. The highest is lover, Shingar Rasa. And after that is apparent, Vatsalya Rasa. After this is the Sakya Rasa. And after that comes the servant mode. Servant is something common in all of them. And the least is the one step inside is the neutral stage, where you agree and accept Krishna is God. I completely bow unto Him, God is great, that's all, beyond that you know. It's neutral, it's good. At least you've accepted and you know and you're convinced and you want to live by it, so that's called neutral.
So, many times when people see God as like the icon, so how?
They are, they are neutral, neutral. What?
Icon, even seeing God as an icon, does that also predict this?
Neutral. It doesn't speak about deeper relationship, it doesn't against deeper relationship. An icon, you have a Taylor Swift as your icon, she's touring the world, you know, something like that. Okay, so she's a, I love Taylor Swift, what can you do beyond you just saying this again and again and looking at her pictures? You can't do anything more. You can't fly up to her and say, hi Taylor, I came all the way from somewhere to see you and let's have a relationship. It's not gonna happen, you're not gonna do it. But these people will not be satisfied with just saying that God is great. God is great, I want to experience Him. I want to serve Him because He is great, I must do something for Him. And they say, not only my service, my service is all a friendship for Him. It develops into friendship, very thick and very close between, like I said, Abhijaya and Krishna. And then from there it goes and it's not enough for me. Because in, in, in servant, you also see He's a master. So a certain type of intimacy is blocked if you see Him as master. So in this, in friendship, we are equal, okay? Me and you, you Krishna, and your dear devotee as Sakya, in this, they're both equal. So you'll see the Gopas get on Krishna's shoulder and sit with him and they do lots of things together. It's like equality, friendship. You can become so intimate. So these intimacies and all further and further, parent to love, that is not so much reflected in neutral stuff. The relationship and its depth, to what extent you can go in your depth of relationship with Krishna. Can understand that because Krishna also will offer himself like that to mother, Yashoda, as a parent relationship. He offered himself and he became afraid. Don't beat me, I, I, I just did that because, you know, I stole the water of Tanya maybe, but throw the stick away. Why should he be afraid? But that's a relationship of love. So it's mentioned that the higher you go, the more Krishna consider the control of his devotee because of the depth of bhakti. He becomes controlled by his devotee. But in the neutral stage, you are God, I am this thing, I am saying good, I recognize you, okay? That's it.
So you want, you want to, you actually make all your efforts possible?
Yes, if you want to, not if you don't want to. It's your own volition. Yeah, sorry to give you, but there's another responsibility, yeah, yeah, okay.
We all are, like, you know, millions of people, we all have different personalities. Some of them are naturally blind towards bhakti. Someone has a different bent of mind, I'm not so actually inclined. Like I feel women have more easy access towards bhakti, I'm sorry to men. Like, is it possible for someone who's not towards bhakti to cultivate bhakti for him? By doing certain physical activities or something like that? Mantra, chanting name to someone?
Yes, it's possible. That's why we're chanting the Arahishamam. It's not just a mantra. So that's a physical thing that you're talking about. Another physical thing you can talk about is worship or form of the Lord. Archalikrha, like you do in a temple or here, your beautiful deities of Rada and Shamsundar. You can worship the Lord and cultivate with your physical capabilities. You have nice dressing you can do, you can offer a nice feast, you can decorate and you can have children, you can, you know, have a festival, you can call people like they're doing here, like that. And this way, you can physically do many things that will get you closer in bhakti because these are all acts of your intelligence, mind, your senses, your body, your intellect. Got used to the service of the Lord and then his glorification. Because it's used for that purpose, it brings you closer.
And if it doesn't come naturally to you, what will it do?
It's not that it doesn't come naturally, it is there already in you. You are only waking it up, you are fanning the flames, that you must understand first. You are a spirit soul, you belong to Krishna, is said by Krishna in Bhagavad Gita. Mummahivam se jivalo ki, jivaluta sanaatana. Every living entity in this world is my part and parcel, belong to me. That's a reality. Now, you may have forgotten that reality, you may have denied that reality, but you can't deny that the sun rises on the east of Kumbh. You can do it for some time because you're in the darkness, maybe. But facts are facts, right? You have to accept it at some point in time. So, that reality is part of you. It's just that it's smothered with so much of long existence in the material realm, in material consciousness. But as you awaken yourself spiritually, it will just come out of you. Because it's most natural for you to follow your love God. You're a member of God, it's just that you're attentively suspending, that's all. You can't deny it, it's an absolute truth. You belong and you may not agree with it. I don't, I don't, I don't listen to Krishna's statement, fine. You see kids sometimes don't listen to their dad. I don't agree with you, I have to go on this truth. I tell them, all sorts of things, right? I don't agree with you, it doesn't matter. If you don't agree, you're not going. You're not going, it doesn't matter that you don't agree, because I know for sure this is for your good, so that's it. So irrespective of your opinion, sometimes we are slammed with what is good for you. Same way, irrespective of your point of view, your opinion and everything, which in your conditioned state, may not be properly oriented. The truth always exists and works. So if you open yourself to the truth and become familiar with it, it takes a little time of, you know, revising those things again and bringing it out again, that's all. It comes out with a gushing force. That's mentioned in many cases, because it's most natural for you. In fact, it's very artificial for you to be cut off from God without His relationship, because He's one of the most prominent relationships. That every living entity has. And it's most natural, most permanent, and it's a permanent relationship. Every other relationships we have is between the birth and death, dies because you die. You die, life is a tragedy in terms of sexuality and terminologies. It writes a comedy and tragedy. Life is a tragedy because everybody dies at the end. Yes or no? Yeah, I call it the great layoff. I'm talking about layoffs, I call it the king of layoffs. Everybody is laid off from their body, out, get out, you die, isn't it? So it's a tragedy, all your relationships go kaput with that, yes or no? Your father, your mother, your brother, your sister, your wife, your husband, your whoever it is, fat, gone. So why are you investing in it so much? It's a good question you ask when you read the Bhagavad Gita. Of course, this is not meant to disrupt your family life, this is the truth. Everybody in the family should understand, we should all together invest in a great relationship with God, together as a family as long as we live. We have better relationships among ourselves, because we have all oriented towards God, towards Krishna. So bhakti is not unnatural, it is the most natural. Everything else you're doing is actually unnatural. You'll wake up to it when you are awakened spiritually, because spirit is permanent. Nahanyate, Hanyamane, Shadide. Very simple logic Krishna gives in the Bhagavad Gita. What a beautiful book Bhagavad Gita is, my gosh. Every time I speak it, I think, wow. I, I, I still feel how nice it is, these instructions for humanity. Stick on it, the Gita.
Yeah, so my question originally related to the five different kinds of relations. And I have a little bit clarity, but I'd still like to understand are these levels or stages? Or are you talking about five different forms of relation? Because the way you explained it, it acts more like levels or stages, that you are, you know, going to be at the.
Good, good question. Yeah, it's not that, it's a thing that you have to go through one stage after the other to the top most. It's perfectly already been settled on with the servant, that's it.
How do you identify or who tells you how?
That's why there's a guru involved in your life. Don't struggle too much, it's not all on your head. Don't have to be so responsible, relax. That's why we accept a guru, a spiritual master, who slowly moves along with his sentences, where, what, when, at the right time.
It's easier to cultivate any relations, if you're talking about nation, states, or talking about individualism, moment you name it, it's easier to cultivate because you know the terms. So if I'm talking about my relationship with Krishna as a parent, Him being a parent to me, it's easy to cultivate it as compared to talking in vague terms.
Right, but that's, each of you recognizing your bhakti at that stage is not it come. It comes only after you have done successfully your sadhana.
So you start off?
Like, your specialty in medicine is after you do your ambivious on your body, when you do your MD. Till then, you can just think about it, this is what I, I'm inclined towards. But first you do your ambivious. That's called sadhana. Your ambivious is preparing yourself to be special. When you come, finish your ambivious, now you know, this is what my inclination is. I want to do radiology, I want to be a, you know, pediatrician, I want to be this, this. It takes you to understand all the fundamentals and experience curing of patients beyond your, you know, so-called duties and everything. Then you're in a fit position to understand. So at this position, it's very difficult for us to think, what should I do? Don't worry, at the right time you'll get to, actually, because you're blossoming and your real stuff will come out, your constitutional position, who are my, will understand very well. Then it's easier for the guru and for you to tell you this is the way.
So it's not something we look at it initially, it's something that you progress with. So it's not something we look at it initially, it's something that will progress with you.
You know, you know, everything available to you. You know that medicine is available, engineering is available, law is available, this is available. But while you're in school, you're waiting for it. Slowly as you mature after the 12th grade, then you know. Even then you don't know actually sometimes, somebody tells you. Like my, I, my chemistry teacher used to like me very much. Because it was very good, you know, telling things and this thing and doing my assignments where you were, I was coming first. So she came right home after I finished my schooling, she told my mother, you must do chemistry. This is why I'm doing engineering, chemical engineering you should do. And she said it. And then I was supposed to go to some Kanpur, IIT, something for this thing, other than that, they decided that the teacher has told me that you must go and do chemical engineering. And they put me in NIT Pichu to do chemical engineering. And they came to the room, it's got nothing to do with chemistry. After going in. Sometimes we don't know, people don't know. Other people who don't know advise you, at least those days there was no counseling, you know, so. I didn't know anything. Anyway, it's on the side, tangentially. But you need to know. And that knowing is going to come to you as you do your sadhana. The knowing is a reward for you and everyone in this life to spiritually awaken yourself. That comes from inside. It's a spiritual experience. Okay? Yeah, I think you're wrong comfortably, agree. Yeah, yeah, it's okay. I, I, I go in no profession like you guys. I go on and on throughout the night. You want, yeah.
But in, in the initial part, when you were talking about how the idea of religion to us is more of a respect of all art. At that time you said something, I wrote it down, you said religion or Hinduism, what we practice today is a reaction to the attack on our deep faith and culture. I somehow couldn't wrap my head around.
Yeah, that's the statement I made. If you go into history, it was very glaring for me. I wanted to research that. Because I read our founders' guru's life, Bhakta Sirdhan Desasui, Yukthapuri. Brilliant intellectual, amazing intellectual, scholar, bar excellence. So he was a contemporary to many of his great freedom factors in this world. They were living in the British times and there was all this big revolutions going on. And that's the time when our founder Pramathada was a Gandhian. Was wearing this cap and khuta and wearing rama. Gandhian. It's a time he met Bhakta Sirdhan Desasui. And he's known to have told him on his first meeting, Parshayus of all your great philosophy, Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavata, he's speaking all his spiritual way for our. The country is on fire. And first we need independence from the British. We need to be free. At that time, Akhizan has known to told him, known to have told him, no, no, more primary and foundational independence is to get free from class or material nature, from Maya. Then only you can become free from this. And he explained to him, so he was very impressed. A very sharp question he asked, he gave a very sharp answer. So if you're interested, pick it up. I'm telling you, I think you understanding that your spirit are not this body and gaining spiritual emancipation is more important than you getting that type of material independence. That will keep going on. Somebody will come and do something, something. It's been happening in the history of India. So what does it matter? First you gain freedom from matter and become known as spiritually independent, trusted, connected with this thing. He gave that experience to me. At that time in history, at one side, these people were still doing these things, the other side, there was a war and fighting. Propagated like, then it came back into this. You will see there are great people, like you will read in your history books, Raja Ram Mohan Roy. You've read him. Who has not read about Raja? Everybody is like, Raja, Bunkin Chandra Chatterjee. Then you'll read about all these great people who fought independence war. Raja Ram Mohan Roy is the person who wrote to the British. That letter is available on the internet now. What the hell is Sanskrit language going to do for us? You remove this Sanskrit language, introduce English, teach us science, teaches the, you know, whole industrialization and our economy will grow and all of that. He said it. He's from a Brahmin family, Roy. And he's a devout Hindu. He makes his Western thought inside. And he said, you guys also should do this. That's, he's the one famous for fighting abolition, sati and all that. And there were corrupt Brahmins also, who were exploiting the Hindus a lot. And the Britishers were also saying this, parpaic, guys. Raja Ram Mahagraha also sati is parpaic. They shouldn't do it. And he's known to be father of modern Hinduism. He is the one who implicated these things. He said, abolish Sanskrit, what because Sanskrit doesn't give us employment, doesn't give us money, doesn't give us jobs. They started thinking and they industrialized it. Before that, there were peasants and they were worshipping every small village and turning at a temple. They were happy, there were no beggars and people were, you know, and nobody was hungry. Everything was fine, was culturally adept. Then comes these people saying that, no, you guys are parpaic, you are old, you're worshipping all great images and items. You're that, this, you should be converted to Christians. Side by side, they had all this evangelism, you know, you know, aggressive evangelism going on. Colonization had always been a backside, aggressive evangelism. Right from the time of Columbus, there's a whole history to that. So they were influencing everybody deeply inside, that you guys are inferior. You worship some funny things in the temple, they doesn't give you money, they'll give you food. Now it was giving us food and everything. You came and changed this, now he's saying it doesn't give you, you have to pay taxes, you have to do that and all that. So slowly they changed. They changed. And they were willing to give up their faith. They believed, they thought, this is the meaning of progress. Progress means you got to do this. Progress means you have to do this according to their standards. So, but they still want to keep up. I'm a Hindu, I don't want to be a Christian, like that. So this is a complex combination of Western thought and feeling. And you have a liking for it, the science. And all those great scientists discovering things and all that, propaganda. And so they had a mix of these two things, responding to this plus keeping up our faith, become a mix of these two things. So they compromised in many ways. And then today Hinduism is a kitchen of lots of things. And then that type of a framework lent itself for conversions, that, this, everything. Because you're not very happy in that if you don't know many things. It's not very clear who's God. And mostly people are, who's God, they say you are God. Everywhere is God. Anteism, polytheism, agnosticism, atheism, everything prevails inside Hinduism, you'll see that. But it's not like that if you read the Bhagavad Gita. It's not like that if you read the Bhagavad, it's so clear. It's so clear, why did it become like that? So they reacted to that inferior feeling that was introduced into them by especially the Britishers. They worked deep inside your psyche. They studied it very well and worked. They entwined Brahmins and gave them big money. You read in the history, the Brahmins were not only corrupt with the Hindus. They said, they said, you will help us study the scripture and tell us what's the main thing and we can change it. They said yes, and they rewrote certain things for them. They were really corrupt. Brahmins are the worst of it. Ever no Brahmin fell. Worst of it, because it dumps, they became sold out and corrupt. Then it all fell apart gradually. So today if you see Hinduism, you'll type, anybody asks who is God? You say, hmm, God is everywhere, you are God, I am God, everything is Brahman, da, 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 da. No, there's some vague philosophy they're talking. But that's not the philosophy given in Bhagavad Gita. Krishna is very clearly saying, I am God. And these are my greatness. There's a whole chapter discussing Viputi yoga, Vai Baba. How I am great? Clear. Then Arjuna says, can you show me how you're great physically, obviously? He shows his machine, but all the ones you'll see the questions is all the questions that we want to know. That's why I put that. And then you can get to know God very clearly, and you can also get to know who you are very clearly. So difficult on this side. But why did it become like this? Because it messed with all this Western idea of religion, Western thoughts and, you know, that, this, and the new economy and industrialization, inferior feeling, material like this. That's very well known all over the world because they colonized different parts of the world and the same feeling exists in other people also who got colonized. Colonization is a very deadly deep influence on people. There's a whole, the psychology of the person who gets colonized and the person who colonizes. They have done deep study, people have written huge papers on it. How to subjugate a race of people and bring them under your control? These guys were expert in that, Europeans, especially the Britishers. So naturally a response to that, screaming, no, I don't like this, it doesn't fall into my this thing, that became the modern Hinduism. The reaction to what they did to you. Ever find? Yeah.
Sir? Hare Krishna. My name is Jyoti.
Jyoti.
Yes. I have a question, but it is of personal nature. It will allow me.
Please go ahead, please go ahead.
Bhagavad Gita is a blend of Bhakti yoga, Karam yoga and Jnana yoga. Science chosen the path of Jnana yoga. They have understood certain laws of the nature. And on the basis of that, they have created the space, they have created the visal also. And which is acceptable to the whole universe because they understand the laws. But all the religions, all the religions, particularly if you see Hinduism and Buddhism, both have mixture of belief system and philosophy. Christianity and Muslims based on belief system only. And all religion are saying, focusing on Bhakti. Bhakti means surrendering to some thoughts, some ideas, some image, some personality, whatever it may be. You being the science student, what, why you have not chosen the path of Jnana yoga? Exploration of the absolute truth? Because science is working on the relative truth. They are understanding the time, space and and working on the quantum mechanics. They, no doubt, they have now a cloaked consciousness because consciousness is creating the reality. So my, just I want to know, why you have chosen the Bhakti path rather than exploring the absolute truth, being the science student from NIT? Because when we accept something, whatever is written, maybe in Bhagavad Gita or maybe somewhere else, accept or reject, chapter is closed, we don't explore. So this, I want to know your.
Thank you very much, Jyoti Shitna, you said Jyoti Shitna. Yeah, thank you very much for your very thoughtful question. I said that Bhakti is a science. You must note that science does not mean only the science as we study and pursue, that's only science. Science, even Bhakti is a science. There is a whole process. And if you perform it, at each mark, you have a certain type of experience. And how it is, everything is explained. That's my capping answer. Going by why you are not adopted Jnana yoga? And why you have come to Bhakti yoga? Which means that you have the feeling that Bhakti is a sentiment, Bhakti is not based on science. Bhakti is not logical, rational and all those things, maybe. Yeah, something like that. Yeah. No, it's not. Bhakti is very rational, very logical, very scientific. That's what, if you read the Bhagavad Gita under proper guidance, you will get to know. Now coming back again to your statement that why you're not used to Jnana yoga? What you're talking about is Jnana. Jnana yoga means connecting my knowledge, yoga to achieve the absolute. So I'm using my Jnana to connect and get the absolute, it's exactly what I'm doing, I am doing Jnana yoga. I am studying the Bhagavad Gita, I know certain other types of sciences which I did before. And I find those type of sciences don't go beyond a certain extent to explain many phenomena even in the universe. Even in the material universe, the material science is inadequate. Till date, we have not actually got to know what is the origin of species or how the world was created. All in a cloud thing, different theories and everything. So that was, that type of science in Jnana is not going to take me, even in the material science, too far. They're still discussing it, they're still speculating it, they're still having theories and they're discussing all that. But here I have in the Bhagavad Gita, whatever these scientists and all are trying to do, want to do, at least as a model, you can accept it. Let's not say, I not believe in it unless you prove it through my science. Okay? Fine. I at least have a model of reality and how things work explained in the Bhagavad Gita and the Bhagavad. And that's great because nowhere there is a full model explained. So that understanding and study of that helps me to get a closer and a better and an all pervasive and all round understanding of the reality. And it seems to me it's a pretty good science. Even if I accept it, okay, I don't have to accept it. I still don't have to accept it, but you simply study it. Yes, on the basis of studying a model, I don't have accepted, I studied as a model. You will see that so many things get explained by that model. Which science is not explaining, that the philosophy is not explaining. You start saying that only theoretically I'll accept it as a model. One of a viable model that's been proposed acts like that and check it out. You will see that you'll be amazed that this model explains so many things. And the science that we know in the modern world is not a patch for it.
That's true.
That way, I am being scientific only. I am not falling into it, oak line and sinker. It's not that I have known everything about Bhakti and all that, I am on the way only. I'm claiming to be a great guy with a halo on my head. You'll shoot saw my feet touching the ground just now. And I have a cold, I suffer fever. Nothing, nothing extraordinary. I'm not saying all those things, but this model is very convincing to me, using my science which I know of, I've examined it. And I think this is a very good explanation of the reality. I have seen it scientifically only. I'm not a-accepted it just like that. Then I started practicing a little bit, let's see if this works. Then I've started doing here and there. And the more I do, the more it opens up to me. And the reality is becoming more and more clear and more and more convincing. It's like a better view from here. It's a here I said, straight, I didn't, you know, uske baat left me. Now you don't know anything, you start in the beginning. And you know, I don't know whether this guy really ah, that model. Then out, that landmark, what is landmark? You become more and more convinced that this guy is a right type. Now I get, I step on the accelerator and go, let's go at the next landmark, the next landmark. And my whole journey is an increasing amount of confidence in the instruction that I got. Because I've already covered the two, three landmarks, the others will come through. Like that, I am also just examining it and taking it. And I'm only reporting to you that I've been increasingly convinced. Has any came I pura hundred percent le diya bokhaya? Has any but that? I am hanging it out and I think it's a very good model, it has worked out for me pretty well. So examine it like that with your intelligence and with your capabilities. And if you don't like it, doesn't matter. You're not threatened in any way. You can go ahead with lives. That's all, it's open. Krishna presence Bhagavad Gita. You may do as you wish to do.
It said it is a blend of only three parts.
But it's also Krishna is telling that this is the best. That you must understand. And then in the eighteen chapter saying, although this is available, this is available, this is available. This is the easiest way, my son, please take it up. Because I'm interested in you making a clean route and get there easily. This is the easiest way. That's all he's saying. So, you know, somebody take the lift here, don't go by the twenty, twenty stories, don't take the, this thing. We'll definitely take the lift, thank you. This Bhakti yoga is the This Bhakti Yoga is the lift.
Yes.
Don't take the Jnana Yoga path as a staircase. Okay?
Yeah.
Om Tat Sat, I am sure that it's time.